Yeah, I hear you, Josh.
You can hear you. So that's complete. I can calibrate the cameras. Everybody sits down and then uh. I'm gonna go rename everybody right now. Can you give uh Manzanita IT co-host?
Yeah, hold on. Okay, you should be good now.
Yeah, I'll get to uh. It's uh. Rename everybody, but as long as you can hear me, then. I think we are set. I gotta move one microphone. Bert's kinda loud, right? So.
Oh, there we go. Now I got my speakers on. I can hear you better.
Fantastic. Yeah, I'm gonna be rustling around a little bit. Um. Where are you gonna sit?
I'm probably gonna be in my office unless you need me out there.
Oh, no, I don't. I just just was curious. I have a um. Have a camera set up still. I still gotta set up.
I think maybe I'd sit at that table to the the right of the. On the right side there facing the the dais.
That's where I'm at right now.
Yep, I got you.
Yeah, that's the camera I gotta set up. I think.
She might sit in the audience too. I'm not sure, but. We need to have it set up so public comment. They have to go up there to the table.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that's what this this mic should pick up anybody that comes over here. Um, I'm just gonna have to listen and see if. There is a small possibility that Bert might be quiet uh on the microphone. But we have to wait. I have to wait and see uh it live. And if I have to, I'll come out and move the microphone, but. I mean. The uh overhead system microphone is fine. It's just that. We've maxed the number of these little special microphones out. So the one that sits over here on the table so people can hear. Uh, is also the one, the main microphone for Bert. So.
Okay.
Um, just have to just have to play it by ear. Won't take long. I'll know within first couple of minutes. Do you have to send computer? All right. Anyway, I'm on I'm on it.
Okay. You talking to me, Josh?
Well, could you? So now there is two issues. Would you give the other?
Hold on, there's two what?
Uh, sorry, there's two ITs. There's Manzanita IT and there's just regular IT. Can you give just? This IT the co-host?
That's the one you wanna be co-host?
Yeah. Cause I can pull this thing out.
I I can make both. Both of them are co-host now.
Right, that's great. The other one, they changed it.
I'm gonna step away for a minute, okay?
Okay, uh, some of the um. Some of the crew is here. Should I let them in?
Nope. Not yet. Let's let you get your stuff done and then I'll let him in.
You can almost do it.
Yes, let me know. I'm gonna step away a sec.
It's lovely. It's computer not this. This looks very fly.
Well, should we leave well up?
No, no, no. Um, I'm so basically this service guy's not here enough, but. I'll I'll pull that one out of there, stick it in his cabinet. Now that I know that's what we're doing, then I'll just put another. Council dais, Peter B. And then I know that was when I was doing parts with Gary and pull another computer out of the leftovers. I can stick in front, so.
Well, I don't have that. You too.
You have to have a. Jump and go in. Shit, okay.
It's up with that.
Okay, yeah. So, well. Okay, should should.
Jay, I'm a logician.
And now, yeah. You can not. So. You know, we are set. Um, as long as uh, you know, that's pretty uh, so. For that's not too sorry for anyone sitting here, but I can't close it otherwise.
So we. We we can upload it then?
And we. This actually. We could just come back or say.
Yeah, and so we'll do it as well. See, we're wrong.
Okay.
Get me now.
All right.
Oh. Just kidding, it's not a case. I want to say so. Let's forget everything. Down like this. Unless we're able to be here. The stores.
Yeah, break them. Oh, yeah, break them.
I'm gonna get him. It's not very. I could try that.
Is it to be?
Should be free. Do you want?
What? Stay out.
We we need to push.
If you can sit again. You know that we're here. He was sitting here, so. Although he doesn't carry any.
Need. Well, I don't know. Keep it not well to. Yeah. Well, how else would we do this? And breaking out.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. You got it, Watson? Yeah. But it told me it couldn't do it when they're in the meeting. No.
It's still sitting in my printer at home.
No worries, well, maybe a couple.
I did have, I did, we have this.
You do have that? Where'd you cut that?
I, I'm not sure, I think that's like. We need to get, you know, I'm good.
You're good? Pretty far. Her house will get. Oh. That's so good, um.
Speechless.
Okay, I see brass. Like.
I have it.
Got the wrong bosses.
Dude, I mean, stay in full apartment.
Can't see. Um, I'm. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. These land division changes. Are they already in?
Okay, can you hear me okay? Am I on?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
We are long.
Um, we're a little bit behind schedule today because we're working out the technology. It's but it sounds like everybody's here that needs to be here. So grateful that you're with us, Brad. Even though you're not able to be here in person in our inaugural test of the new council chambers. I'm gonna go ahead and um call the meeting to order. I'm gonna tap this very gently. Because I was warned not to slam it. Um, and welcome everybody to the August eleventh twenty twenty five meeting of the Man's Need a Planning Commission. Um. Do we have first on the agenda is audience participation. I imagine there are lots of people out there in the world. More than there are in here. Um, is anyone have anything you want to say to the commission?
I do not have any hands raised, Karen.
No hands raised, okay. Um, great. Well, send us an email if you thought it comes to mind. Um, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from June ninth twenty twenty five. Are there any additions, corrections? Errors? Misspellings of people's names?
Oh, did you picked up that Tom wasn't here but was listed as?
Oh, that's, that's on the twenty first.
Oh, that's the.
Yeah, that's, that's the next meeting.
Um, sorry, I was here in the next.
Yeah. That was the, when we did the subdivision on the third. Yeah.
The June ninth would okay me.
Okay. Any other objections?
I guess I moved it, we approved. June ninth minutes as is.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Uh, I mean.
Okay, approved. Um, next one is the July twenty one minutes and that one. Um. We have one correction, that is that Commissioner Chris was not present at that meeting. He was having way more fun than we were. And so we need to strike his name from the attendees.
There is, there is. Article A, the general update, just seems really circuitous to me. And I'm not sure it's exactly right. And it could be wrong to. So he understands English better than I do needs to.
Okay, so that makes sense to me.
Well, it says it was agreed to hold the next scheduled meeting on August eighth.
Oh.
And I don't believe that is correct. I believe you.
You're right.
I believe somebody meant to say August eleventh.
It might have been the council meeting on August eighth.
But I don't think there was a council, but there was a. Wasn't there a meeting of some sort on August? That was Saturday.
But it, yeah, it wasn't, uh, so.
It wasn't.
Another work session, August eleven, that's today with.
We might have got it September and August mixed up in that.
Possible. Alright, so can we strike, um, say it was agreed to hold a possible, possible additional meeting on August twenty fifth.
I think that's what, I think that's what was meant to be said.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Great. Any other corrections? Your motion to approve has corrected.
Move to approve has corrected.
Thank you, Frank. This is second.
Second.
Thank you, Lee. All in favor, say hi.
Hi. I'm abstaining.
You weren't here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Onto updates. That is Leila. I'm gonna turn my mic. I don't rush it on paper.
No updates.
No, no updates.
No updates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Um, okay, so we're off to our discussion of the land division ordinance revisions. Um, and I wanted to just describe for the people out in the world, um, that we're gonna do this a little bit differently in that um I'm going to ask each of the commissioners for a verbal either agree or slightly disagree or really disagree on each of the points. Um, so that we can have a lot more clarity in where we all stand and hopefully we'll be able to reach consensus at least that um our final product will be able to be forwarded off to city council. Any questions on that?
When, when you say points, you're gonna go through the articles?
Yeah, um, Marcy's, the, uh, basically it's gonna be the agenda, um, the memo from Marcy. It says reviewed land division articles one to seven. That's where I wanna pause and make sure that each one of those articles make sense. Um, and if there are questions, we can answer them then. If there are arguments to be made, I'd like to push those to the end so that we get as much agreement as we can and then start hashing out the details. On, does that make sense?
Yes.
So try to, try to hold me to that. Skip it. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna turn it over to Marcy. Thank you very much for being here again and guiding us through this.
Yes, uh, thank you for being here. I've got to be in your city council chambers. Your, your city hall, I should say, um. Last weekend, it's really, really nice. So sorry, I'm not there in person. I'm here with Walt, um, who you all know, I believe, and he's actually helped. Back in January, he had drafted the land division code. So now that we are going through it article by article for the second work session, uh, this is the second work session that we're reviewing it. I asked him to come back and explain um the whole thing to you a little bit better, starting with articles one through seven. So I'm gonna, um. Also, I want to remind you that you asked some questions last time about articles one through seven. And I put this into uh, into Walt's territory and asked him to address those. He's done that in his staff report, but I wanted to go through the questions with you just from the top. So if I could have the sh- the uh, sharing ability. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Well, while I'm waiting, um, here we go. And everyone can see the screen here. First of all, the, the presentation that you have, um, which is some, some slides followed by the actual land division code. I think that's what it, what it is. Um. That has not changed from last meeting. You have the same material. But what we want to do this time is go over articles one through seven more thoroughly. Uh, there are eight articles in the land division code as it's proposed. And article eight is mostly about the expedited land division, middle housing land division. But articles one through seven are somewhat new, um, although they include many pieces of your previous subdivision code and and as soon as I turn it over to Walt, he can, he's gonna explain that in more detail, kind of going through article by article or through his staff report, whichever works best for him. But let me just um remind you that you asked these questions about the land division code last time. And they were, um, kind of, they had a lot to do with generally what is the relationship between articles one through seven and article eight, which has to do with the expedited middle housing land division. But is, is a subdivision without building permit eligible for an expedited middle housing land division was one question. Do articles two and three apply to or, or say only apply to non-middle housing lots? And application materials, this was a suggestion that we add this to the requirement for an application. Um, that material should show trails and multimodal connections within two hundred fifty feet of plot boundaries. Another question was, is or are two or more units, for example, a townhouse? Is that a threshold enough for eight oh four oh five A and B, which is in the article eight expedited middle housing land division? Um, and is there any more required of a regular subdivision than you had before in your subdivision code? Um, and then continuing on with these questions. How does the current ninety five five process compare to what is required by proposed ninety five five? Ninety five five is the ordinance number for your subdivision code, which is being replaced by this land division code. And is there more that's required by the new land division code? Um, does the city get to define approval criteria? And then this is a similar question as some of the above, like what is the relationship between one through seven and eight? Which parts of one through seven apply to middle housing and which parts don't? Um, when does it apply? What is the threshold and how is middle housing defined? So what I would like to do now is, um, see if there are any questions about the questions and then turn it over to Walt. Also make sure that everybody received that staff report by Walt.
Marcy, I have a question. Um. To save me some reading time, I've, I've got tried to go through all this material carefully, but I'm sure I missed some things. And I'm thinking back to the old ordinance ninety five five, or the existing, I should say. And there were mentions of water courses, public land for public purposes, unsuitable land, wetlands, and numerous other things. So there were over fifty some requirements in that in that document. Does the new draft incorporate and absorb all those the older draft ordinances? All, excuse me, all the elements in the older draft ordinance?
Yeah, I think that's a question that Walt will be able to answer. Um, but I can't quite see who's speaking.
It's Lee, Marcy.
Okay, um. Okay. Um, that's, and you're, for some reason, I'm not seeing. Is that Lee? Waving your hands? For some reason, Lee's not on, I'm not seeing Lee's camera. Anyway, that might be a technical issue, but okay. Thanks for that question, Lee. Are there any more questions to add to the list for Walt or questions about the questions? Yeah, Tom.
Um, and I'm sorry, I, I wasn't at the last meeting and I hope I'm not covering old ground and boring everyone. I, I was curious about the overall ordinance. Is this perchance a model ordinance? Uh, I know that the state government often puts those out, or is this something that we devised whole cloth from, from the existing ordinance?
It's. Well, I'll let Walt explain it in more detail, but it's made of your old subdivision ordinance and it is including Senate Bill four fifty eight provisions for the expedited middle housing land division. Um, I would say that that's how to characterize this. So there, there is some model code or it's really model Oregon administrative rules for what is a new process for expediting middle housing land division that's been added. Um, in addition to cleaning up your old subdivision ordinance. Does that make sense, Tom?
Wait, I, I know that the state government, DLCD, DOJ, they draft model ordinances, send them out to local governments who, who often, you know, modify them that it adopted generally. And I'm wondering, is there a model land division ordinance that we're working off of, off of here?
No, there's there are Oregon administrative rules. Um, I believe that that's how we characterize it, that we have to meet. But Scott, I see Scott nodding. Scott, do you have the kind of official story on this? How?
I think you, you hit it. It's, it's essentially a modification of our current subdivision ordinance or land division ordinance, if you will, to meet the, the new state laws.
But there's no model code for the land expedite middle housing land division that, not in the same way that there is for the, the middle housing type.
Not that I have, not that I'm aware of, no.
Right, okay.
So, uh, nobody else has adopted this before. You just took our existing code, took the rules and the regulations and the new laws and revised the whole thing, but we wouldn't find an example of its use in some other city.
Well, that's not true. Every city in Tillamook County had to adopt um, some form of middle housing land division, or as I understand it, if they did not, the statute would apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah.
I have a question to Marcy or Scott or Marcy or Walter, whoever, but uh, uh, the middle housing, uh, land division as opposed to the subdivision, uh, is there a unified set of standards for all of that?
Yeah.
Here's that, in the current document, there are two sets of standards. And if it's a subdivision, wouldn't any subdivision be subject to the middle housing standards? Because it's state law.
That might be something that Walt has to answer, but there are some uniform or universal block and lot and street standards, for example, that I, I think they're in housed in articles two and three that apply to all development, whether it's a middle housing or a s- land division or a conventional subdivision.
It, it, it's more the uh, uh, private streets, driveways, easements, those kinds of things. There appears to be two sets of standards, the older standards from the seventies and nineties and then the middle housing standards. So, uh, that's a, a general question.
That's you're highlighting um, a finishing step that we have to take on this land division code. And also, um, Bert, I just want to acknowledge that we've received you know, the TSP update for street and block standards and all of those have not been folded into this yet. And we didn't make those changes between the last time you reviewed this and, and this time for just expediency's sake, we want to make sure that everybody understands the concept and then we'll be incorporating the TSP. Um, additional standards as well as anything else that comes out of this meeting and anything that comes out of um, or as a result of the council's decision-making process on the ninety five four. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Would we receive that? I guess we'd receive that prior to the public meeting where we would adopting or making a recommendation against.
Exactly.
That's September or something.
That's, that's the plan that Leila and I talked about.
Super. Thank you.
Any other questions so far? I want to make sure that we bring Brad in. Um, have you got any questions? Or comments on just this general overview? Questions about the questions? I'm not sure he heard me. Am I speaking too quietly?
No, it's good.
Okay, got it. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure. Um, okay. And I guess then we're gonna turn it over to Walt, is that right, to walk us through his memo and the answers to these questions?
Walt, would you like me to pull your staff report up or do you just want to walk through it? Kind of while people have it? I think people have print copies in their hands.
They're print copies. Uh, question to everyone, do you want me to start with the questions and work backwards? Or just go ahead and start with a review of the proposed document?
We prefer that we go through each article and get to the the questions later. And if is it okay if we have questions as you're going through each article and interrupt you? Rather than wait until the very.
Definitely, that's, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that we're all on the same page.
Alright.
As we, before we move on to the next.
That makes a lot of sense. I would rather talk about when we get to it than, oh, by the way, down the road. Before I start, you have a spiffy looking, uh, council chamber. I have not seen the new city hall, but that that, that looks very uptown, so I thought I'd share that with you. Um. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I hope it's a little cooler over there than it is here in Salem. Um. I'd like to start off by noting something that Marcy mentioned. This is, if you will, I think a fairly complete draft, but it's still a draft. And there will be changes. And there will be changes that will need to be made down the road based based on comments from, say, DLCD, the attorney. Um, in fact, questions you're asking here will probably need to be incorporated with uh any changes. So if anything, we're going to give you a snapshot of where we're at right now. And that in the next meeting or meetings, uh, we will incorporate all the updated um. Uh, material. So I hope that works for uh everyone. Okay, let's start off with what we have, which is the current ordinance ninety five dash five. Um, anyone who's worked with this ordinance, and I hope Scott will be nodding his head. It is a little cumbersome. It's not very clean and clear. Um, it is. I hate to use the word antiquated, but it's about thirty years old right now. Um. That would probably make it historic, I think. Um, there it's again, organization isn't there. There's little guidance on design standards for things that we currently face in the planning uh system. Uh, there's nothing about access easements. For example, the current document talks about private streets. But does not provide any guidelines, um. Any improvement requirements, when and where they can occur, that sort of thing. Um, also, the uh Planning Commission has the authority to review partitions and subdivisions. But uh, the state law has changed to uh leave that as a staff level um review. And I think a lot of the criteria that are there are not very clear and they're also kind of scattered. One thing that I came up with because I've been using ORS chapter ninety two. Is that uh property boundary adjustments are not even in the code. And so we handle these through chapter uh ninety two. You know, in spite of whether or not you did this housing project, um along with other communities in Tillamook County. The code certainly needed a uh update and a uh refresh uh if nothing else. So what we have presented here today is uh the proposed new ninety five dash five. And it's divided into eight articles. The first seven basically are the core of the document. And then the eighth one touches on the issues with regard to expedite land divisions and uh middle housing. I guess, Marcy, you just want me to focus on the first seven for now or go through all eight?
Think you might as well go through the all all eight, but start with one through seven because we missed, we did, we left that to do this time.
Okay, that sounds real good. Well, let's start off with Article one. That's the basically the introduction. Uh, article here. It talks about this document is set up for land divisions, including property boundary adjustments. So anyone who's dividing land subdivision, uh partition, property boundary adjustment, which is not a. Division, but still we're looking at some uh uh moving boundaries, if you will. Uh, that's all accounted through this ordinance. Anyone involving a planning unit development, though, is subject to provisions in ordinance ninety five dash four. This ordinance establishes standards and a applicant is welcome to apply for a variance to those standards. And of course, the planning commission would hear that. I think overall in terms of significant changes, I think it's mostly organization for clarity. Uh, in detail. Also, we put a note in there for series partitions. And this is a classic case where you take a very large piece of land and divide off two, one or two parcels every year. Effectively creating a subdivision. We have noted that that will require a subdivision review upfront. If there is significant land for uh additional land divisions. Uh, there is no change to the variance requirements that you currently have, so we're looking at variance as an option. So with that, I'll stop right there and ask if there's any questions that folks may have.
Yes. Uh, well, I'm looking at one point O two O, the statement of purpose.
Yes.
And, you know, a lot of people kind of skip over these things, but it it's really important to me because if there's any. Ambiguity or confusion down the road in. The provisions of their application, people will look back to the statement of purpose to resolve the ambiguity. And and looking through this purpose here, something that leaped out to me is. Um, to avoid undue congestion of population. I'm not really sure what that means, but someone could construe that is. To avoid density.
Yeah.
And if it has that connotation, then I'm I'm troubled by it. So I'm I'm wondering, well, I'm I'm wondering if other people. Either confused or concerned as I am and would like to see that changed or admitted.
One thing I I will note that when you write these things and go through them about ten times, there's some of those here. I think that's a very good point. I think it does kind of lean into the fact that you want to. Kind of have a spread out community as opposed to we're looking at the infill right now. I think eliminating that phrase makes perfect sense. And I would be certainly for it.
You have a suggestion for.
I would just.
Different way to to, I mean, to distribute um the population fairly throughout the city or. Just leave it all out.
I would just. Strike it, because I I can't really think of some way to. I mean, there are cross purposes to increase density through infill, but also to respect. Scenic views, property rights. I mean, I don't I don't know how to craft that in a way that would capture everybody's interest. But I'm concerned just leaving it as is would give somebody. An argument against infill and density and housing later. So I would just strike it.
Any other comments on that?
Good catch, Tom. Yes, good one. Agreed.
Nothing from Brad? Hearing nothing, I think we'll strike that and move on. Thank you.
And and then if I still have the floor, I I had under the question on one point O five O, the scope of the regulations. Is this the one place in the ordinance where we? Dictate what is going to be. A type one review and or a type two review? I mean, later in 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 Article seven, you you lay out the different procedures for type one view and type two review. But I didn't see there. What issue is the one and 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 which is the other? Is it is this the one place where that? It'll tell you what type of application. Gets subjected to which type of review?
Well, if you look at it under a property line adjustments, it notes that it's a type one. Under partition subdivision type two, um, a replat, uh, it's a type two application. And expedited land divisions, um. When I put this thing together, I didn't get that far in the process. I could make that modification. Generally, you don't get into the administration of it this early in the code. I prefer to have that as a separate chapter. Maybe it's my personal way of looking at it. But you know upfront with each type of application, what, whether it's a type one or type two.
Yeah, I I think that's important, too. I just wanted to make sure that this is the one place you would look when an application comes in and decide. What procedure we're going to follow. It's not. You you wouldn't look to later articles.
Actually, what one thing I did is that if you look at, for example, partitions. You could just pull out chapter five and hand it to someone and and then chapter seven, say. Here's the process. Here here's everything you need to do to partition your property. And then you hand them chapter um uh Article seven and say, and here's the type two process and how it works. So um, in this juncture, it's it's, I try to keep things together where possible, just to simplify. I fully believe in handouts. And so if there's some that staff can help the public, here is what we're doing and here's the rules for it. Um, the other thing too is that uh it gets a little complicated. If you decide to change the process, I'd like to focus on one portion of the ordinance as opposed to. Several different parts there. I've I've kind of tripped up in the past when you miss something, so. I think an applicant knows what they're getting into upfront, and then when they get to the particular application, then they know the details.
Well, I still have a confusion. I apologize for that, uh, where. Uh, and partition is two or three parcels. And a subdivision is four or more lots. And uh, is is this section only applying to uh? Single family houses because a duplex or a triplex. I'm just a little confused about that. So could you explain?
Sure. Uh, actually, that's an interesting question. The state. Um, in chapter ninety two makes it clear there is a distinction between dividing land. As a partition and creating a subdivision. More often than not, you're right, a subdivision will likely be residential. Although I've seen industrial subdivisions too. However, if you have a commercial piece of property and want to divide it into two, you would still be using the partition. This ordinance is not exclusive to residential. It applies across the board for all zones within the city. I think the only unique section or article in this document is Article eight. And that is exclusively exclusively tied into residential development. So again, you have a commercial property, want to split it, you would still use ordinance ninety five dash five.
That helps quite a bit. Okay, thank you.
Is that is one way to um. I guess, think about this and well, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you say had an acre of land and you were subdividing it. Into four parcels, you'd use the subdivision um procedure. Then if you took one of them and you built a cottage cluster on it, and at the same time you wanted to middle housing. Land divided into individual lots, you would use Article eight provisions to for that process.
Precisely. Yeah, exactly. Again, Article eight is unique to the expedited process, but also the middle housing process. But if you have. A twenty thousand square foot parcel and you wanted to divide it into three. Of seven, about seven thousand square feet each, that's just a straightforward partition.
If it was a oh twenty thousand square foot parcel that uh someone wanted to. To divide into fifteen or one of ten or whatever, uh, that would. Be the middle housing if it was exclusively residential. If it was duplexes on up.
Yes, again, these are two different animals. One, one is just. I'm trying to look for a word that would probably simplify it. It's it's, let's let's call it regular partitions and subdivisions. Those are those are handled through this code. When you get into specific for middle housing. It's also handled by the code, but it is specific to the requirements in Article eight.
Walt is. It it would be handled under the expedited. Process in Article eight, whether you were dividing it into three parcels or six parcels. Is that correct?
It can be handled that way, but it's for residential use only. You could not.
That's what I meant. If it if it's residential and. Partition and subdivision don't really apply.
Right.
Is that correct?
Well. Okay, again, you need to separate between. Article eight. Is a bit of a hybrid article. It 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 contains two concepts in one article. One has to do with the expedited partition. The other has to do with dividing for middle housing. And I would think one option maybe just to separate those two. To avoid confusion. That was one of the things when I went through the uh putting together my staff memo. Is that I noticed that both of them were combined, but they're not really the same. But the bottom line is this, someone has a piece of property, they want to divide it into two, that's a straight ahead partition. If they can meet the requirements based on density. And or um, it's going to be designed for, I I think, the low income residents. There's a. Uh, particular process for that. That is for expedited. You can do it that way, but if it's just straight ahead. Jim Penn's coming in to divide a piece of property into two for two new big homes. That is a straight ahead regular partition.
I I think I understand maybe uh Walt is that provision that eighty percent, as it stands now, eighty percent. Of the available square footage or something like that is the trigger for the middle housing. Uh, and that would be, you would then know that it's actually middle housing. As opposed to a a large show, single family development.
Actually, the eighty percent would just apply for the expedited portion of it. You process the application a little quicker and it doesn't seem to be that much quicker, but. This is part of the expedite review that residential uses have to be either certain density. Or have to meet a income level.
You know, that I guess maybe just just a a question, would it be uh simpler to have a uh? You know, uh. The middle housing be the essentially residential ordinance. As opposed to have uh, I don't know, items in the subdivision partition ordinance that may conflict with. The middle housing ordinance. It's just a a general question, you know, maybe. Maybe simplify it to just kind of keep keep one general. Uh, subdivision ordinance or something that would uh apply to the whole city. Uh, and then. Uh, the expedited thing, as you say, would be a a separate thing.
Well, I don't know if there'd be any advantage to that. Because there are a number of things in Articles one through seven that apply to expedited. And middle housing projects. So you are tied in. Again, look at Article eight as a unique feature. For certain types of residential development. Those aside, every other partition in the city. Is subject to Articles one through seven.
Well, you're saying that we should break it out into Article eight and Article nine, though, to divide those expedited land divisions and middle housing land divisions? And to so to make more clarity.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. I just looked at that and it's it's. What's that?
You say it does get a little muddled with all of it in one.
Precisely. I I looked at that. It works, but I would strongly, well, I'm going to say I suggest. Wholeheartedly to take eight and divide it into eight and nine, one on expedited. And one on middle housing. And that way that would really, I think, avoid a little uh confusion. But yes, I I totally concur.
Well, i- it is there, I I know at the start it. You you divide. You distinguish between expedited and middle housing, but then the rest of the article doesn't seem to be. To make any difference between those two. You still go through the same process, right?
Correct. In other words, a type two is a type two process, but if you notice in the middle housing. Uh, the difference is you will notify area owners and agencies. Both before and after the decision is made, so there is a little uh change with that. So there are some minor differences, but again, type two still holds. But again, type two still holds for middle housing and also for the expedite land division. So I, I, I think separating those two out would probably be beneficial. Um, and again, I think it allows a reader to uh, cover, cover the process a little cleaner instead of jumping around through the uh, article.
Then I think we can also list the regulations, instead of listing them as regulations common to both. Uh, under expedited land division, here's the regulations. Under middle housing, here's the regulations. Even though some of that crosses over, it makes it very clear for each one.
Yeah.
Precisely, precisely.
Thank you.
And the approval criteria is different, at least spelled out here. So it would be helpful to pull those apart. Okay, good suggestion. Follow that.
So in terms of the scope of regulation, we're going to leave A, B, C, and D the same, and we're going to do an E and an F identifying that the scope of those regulations are. And I'm just talking about this piece, the one point oh five oh piece. Is that correct, Walt?
Yeah, I think that would make sense. We're just spelling it out a little clearer. So you would have E for expedited and F for middle housing. Concur.
Okay, so caring for your way of doing this, you might want to just make sure we all agree.
I, yes, I agree. Cause it's, it seems like a big deal. So let's just go start this end. Tom, do you have any?
No, I think that makes sense to divide them, divide Article Eight into eight and nine and make a corresponding change in Article One.
I agree.
I agree.
That helps clarify things. Yes.
I agree.
And Brad.
That's a yes.
Great. Thank you very much. We agree. I can move forward. Okay. Next. So I guess we should ask whether there are any other questions. Did you want to go through the rest of the um, Article One?
Well, I've kind of provided the summary and it's been there, I think, for you folks to look at for a little while. And I think part of what I'm here for is to answer questions. So are there any other questions, issues, comments, suggestions on Article One before we move on to Article Two?
Well, I hate to keep asking this, but uh, if I was to do a single-family subdivision uh, in the city uh, of uh, forty lots, is that subdivision of, let's say, forty-five thousand square foot? Is that subdivision uh, not subject to the middle housing standards under the state law? But if someone wanted to take a five thousand square foot lot and uh, subdivide that, then it would be subject to the middle housing standard to the state law.
Yes.
In other words, if you're looking at detached housing, forty lots, that's a straight ahead subdivision. If you're looking at some combination where there's duplexes, triplexes, it's going to involve the middle housing requirements.
Well, so that, that would say that uh, any new subdivision would really move forward under the older provisions.
Yeah.
Okay, and that the, the middle housing ordinance then is really uh, the unique aspect of this, which is to create, you know, smaller dwellings and uh, with design standards, uh, these dwellings fit the character of beauty.
Correct.
I just got a little confused again. If, if we're going to do a subdivision of anything over three lots, there is no such thing as single-family housing anymore.
That's what I'm trying to understand here.
Yeah, so, so we do single lots, we do lots, we'll call them whatever. And then down the road, if somebody wanted to take one of those lots and put a duplex on it or two townhomes on it, is that a I'm not sure whether it's going to be Article Eight or Article Nine, but it would, would that be an expedited process?
No, it sounds, if it's duplex, triplex, fourplex or cottage, it's middle housing.
Right.
And I think that the piece that we need to. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, in that, in that case, you're not subdividing the lot because the duplex, triplex, quadplex is on one lot, but if it was a townhome.
That's why I use townhome as an example. If we do that, then it would go to the expedited whichever eight or nine, whichever we decide.
Believe us.
Yeah.
Here, now there's something that um, I'm looking for it in Article Eight, maybe Walt, you can find it, but um, at a middle housing lot, say a lot, somebody comes in after they've done their expedited subdivision into single dwelling lots, they take one of those lots and then they put a quadplex on it and say that uh, these can be subdivided into four lots per the expedited middle housing land division. But it, it remains, and this goes with the recorded plat, middle housing. Meaning that once then those quadplexes sit on their own four separate lots, it cannot be any further subdivided because it's, it's recorded as a middle housing land division.
That is correct. In fact, that's under the conditions of approval. Now I've got to find it here, but uh, that criteria blah, 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 blah. Uh, conditions of approval. Yeah, there was something about in there uh, condition to, okay, under eight sixty A uh, condition to prohibit further division of the resulting lots or parcels. So, so that would be, yes.
But I don't know if that helps people conceptually understand how the middle housing land division is different from a regular subdivision. Or, or does it just confuse people more?
I, I think to, for me, I think what you're saying is, let's say it's a, a forty lot, five thousand square foot subdivision. Uh, in order to be expedited, it would have some kind of a, a condition on it that would say you need to meet the minimum FA re, FAR requirements of duplex or more. And therefore you would know that it's going to be middle housing, even though there's nothing in the code that precludes uh, a single-family subdivision or a subdivision that could be exclusively single-family house, houses.
Well, if I understand what, what Walt has created here is there's an expedited procedure that is new. And the way I understand it, it could apply to a conventional subdivision. And it could apply to a middle housing land division. Is that right, Walt?
That is correct. The only provision though, that you need to understand is that you're going to have to meet a density requirement for expedite. You just don't come in and say one acre, oh, let me see, ten acres and we're going to plop like four or five houses on it. You would need to meet the density requirement, else you cannot go through the expedited process. So again, the conventional subdivision is really found in Article Six. It's, you know, pretty straightforward. Um, what you have for eight is just the unique circumstances of um, moving higher density projects forward as expedite and also uh, looking at higher density through uh, middle housing.
Okay, I get it.
Can you do a mind meld later?
Well, I think the expedited is the trigger, right? Yeah, and then, and based on density, I mean, that's, I think that was very clarified.
Yeah, that's uh, I don't.
Walt, is that required by law? That we have that expedited process for
No, I, I will.
Middle housing.
Now I'll jump in here on this because I'm pretty sure that's a little, it's a little extra gift that we're providing through this process. We do not have to, we're not required to provide an expedited process for regular subdivisions. We are required to provide it for middle housing land division.
E- even subdivisions that in, in meet the eighty percent density threshold for, for whatever the zoning is there.
Well, that, that's always been the part that um, that I didn't totally understand. And I'm looking at eight, eight oh, one oh applicability. The expedited land division, uh, provisions of five A and B creates enough lots or parcels. That this is what you're referring to Walt as the eighty percent density or um, dwellings with incomes below a hundred and twenty percent. That would be in a regular, in a conventional subdivision, if you meet those two things, you're eligible for expedited um, land division. But, and this is why I think we should separate these two things because expedited land division and middle housing, expedited land division are two separate things. If you have a middle housing project, you're eligible, you have to be eligible per state law for expedited land division. So it's really B that's helping us comply with the state rules. Um, A is an extra thing that I, we can decide to uh, to go forward with that.
Yeah, we need to talk about that when we get.
When we, when we get to section eight.
Okay.
Eight and nine. Okay. I had a question about, um, if I can switch thinking just a little bit. In the definitions, we have some things that are defined elsewhere. So for example, streets, I think our transportation plan does, doesn't it describe the different kinds of streets, collector's streets, arterials, that kind of stuff? And couldn't we point to the, the transportation plan as the source of the definition? That way, if the transportation plan changes, our, we won't be in conflict in our code. And we'll only have one place to update. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And there may, there may be others I hadn't thought about, but you know, some of the um, definitions in ninety-five-four might carry into here. Just, I don't have anything specific other than the streets is what jumped out at me. No.
But I think that the intention is to incorporate the new T S P amendments by cross-reference into this land division code, but we they were happening concurrently when Walt was drafting this.
So if we can just set that aside as a potential, once, you know, if the T S P updates are complete, if it makes sense to do that, let's flag that. But it's not critical either way. I'm just thinking down the road. When we have to amend things, it's a lot easier just to amend it once.
Much, yes.
I, yeah, I concur. I, I think, I think I'll just look through the um, definitions again, make sure that things are consistent uh, across the board, not only in the T S P, but ninety-five dash four here. So no matter what you look at, you're looking at the same thing. I think they're pretty straightforward, but usually I think it's traditional and logical to some degree to put this information uh, as part of the definitions.
Well, I guess I, I had a point about this that I thought we would get to when we have to revise portions of this, and that is the definitions I think should go in ninety-five-four. I don't know what, um, this is a similar theme to what Chair Karen is talking about. Um, I don't believe that we should have definitions separately here in the land division. I think they should be on ninety-five-four.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, I thought that was the Chair's point and I agree with that. Whenever you have two different ordinances with, and they try and repeat the same definitions, something's always amiss and then you have an inconsistency. So it's, it's better to have it in one place and just reference it anywhere else.
There are going to be some things like a property boundary adjustment that aren't going to be found in ninety-five-four, so. But wherever they are, I think it would be helpful to refer. We haven't actually adopted the T S P amendments yet, so make sure they all work. Everything's married?
Yes.
Okay, any other issues or questions about um, Article One?
You raise a very interesting point on the definitions, Marcy. And this is something that I faced when working on updates in the city of Ham Hill. You have two codes, one on partitions, land divisions, and a separate code on zoning. I'm hoping Scott will nod his head in approval, but I think the creation of one uniform development ordinance probably makes a little more sense, if not now, than down the road.
I mean, a lot of times the land, the land division ordinance is part of, it's not separate.
Right, it's, it's part of the code.
Well, we're making a code, that helps. So we'll be moving from ordinance to a municipal code and that should help address some of these concerns because they'll be in the same chapter of that code.
Okay.
Point taken.
Okay.
Anything else on Article One? So can I just ask for a little bit of a verbal, other than what we've discussed today? We're pretty much okay with Article One and can, and can proceed.
With the eight years that we've talked.
Yeah, with, with concerns we've had. Um, I pointed Brad first since he's not looking at his little camera. Um, are you okay moving ahead, Brad?
Hi.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, Bert?
Good.
Good.
Yes.
Good. Good. Yeah, the question's Tom.
Just a second. So one of the things you incorporate from ninety-five-four is the variance provisions? Is that right? So I'll, I'll we can, in, in reviewing an application, we can grant a variance following the criteria in ninety-five-four.
Right, and I think it's important to understand, and I think I even covered it a little bit more. Okay, I think I covered it a little. Let's excuse me, once in a while you'll see a little person walking behind me. Granddaughter is visiting. We're doing the best we can to entertain her. Um.
Listen to this.
What's that?
Or listen to this.
Yeah, um. No, lost me train of thought. Thanks a lot. Um, you know, uh, basically in the admin section, we note that if it's a variance, it has to go to the planning commission. Staff can look at clear and objective applications like partitions and subdivisions uh, or property boundary adjustments. But a variance is discretionary in a lot of uh, ways. And it's not exactly objective. It's, it can be somewhat subjective. That has to go to the planning commission. And in the process of looking at the variance, the planning commission will automatically, automatically look at the partition or subdivision request as well. So the whole, the whole package goes to you at that point if there is a variance. Otherwise, it's a staff level review.
May I follow up on that? Um, in section one oh eight oh of the new ninety-five-five, you refer to section ten point one five oh to ten point two oh oh of ninety-five dash four. Is that the ninety-five dash four that we're old one or the one that council is reviewing now? I just want to make sure we have the reference rected in there. I don't have ninety-four in front of me.
Um, I think I worked off of the old code. Again, we would have to update that. Kind of some parallel tracks here. Okay, noted.
Thank you. All right. Did you have anything else, Tom?
No, I'm good.
Hey, you're good otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay, vertical two, next.
Article two, okay, now we're getting into some design standards for lots and parcels. This applies to um land divisions and creating um obviously lots or uh parcels. Uh it talks about, obviously, you need to meet the minimum uh requirement of the underlying zone. Um. And. I think the major changes here is that there is a provision for access. Uh I don't think it was spelled out very well. Uh and there's different types of access, both for basically a parcel, flag lot, also a cul-de-sac. As a different type of uh access. This thing also calls out a little clearer flag lot. I noticed that in the current code, it talks about flag lots and private streets and. And whatnot, but there's never any guidelines on what is acceptable. And one of the things you need to know, for example, with a flag lot. If it goes uh, you know. Hundred fifty, two hundred feet to get back to the home. That is now getting into some fire district safety standards where things like turnarounds need to be uh provided. Again, that's not part of your current regulations, so those are pretty much updated. Otherwise. It's pretty straightforward, aversion to through lots. Uh make sure there is utility easements in place. And also you cannot do any lot averaging. So if the minimum lot size is five thousand, you can't have a six thousand and a four thousand. All of the lots have to be five thousand or greater. So I think, again, we're just probably clarifying some of the um. Language in terms of I see it in the current ninety five dash five, but there's no guidelines on. How to go forward with that, and I think the one thing, if it's going to be clear and objective. You want to make sure the standards are clear and objective. And again, someone wants to vary the standard, they are welcome to submit for a variance. And that would be heard by the uh planning commission along with the partition.
Okay, and and can I clarify something um that might be coming up in questions next is? This again. Is for conventional subdivisions. If ninety five four allows townhouses to be on lots of a certain size and it allows them to be averaged. That's uh not subject to these standards.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question on flag lots. Um the access strip in the text says a minimum of twenty feet width. The little drawing there shows twenty five feet.
And that is directly the result of my inability to modify the diagram. So we will get that changed one way or the other. That must have been. That must have been Lee?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I also have a couple of other typos in the memo that I thought I took care of, but. I'm just waiting for your comments here.
He isn't wearing glasses, so we can see. That diagram what's written.
So Marcy, I think what you you said is that this would be for a conventional subdivision that's not targeting middle housing.
Right.
And and that if a subdivision was targeting middle housing, then it would be under the middle housing standards.
In ninety five four.
Right, okay, and then the I guess the next question is is if there's. How does the state's uh minimum lot? Or minimum lot size work? Does that apply to all lots in the city or? Just to lots that will become middle housing?
This. Day.
It's a good question, since we're in the middle of not knowing exactly what the minimum lot size is going to be um in ninety five four. I think this. This question's a little puzzled right now.
Oh, okay.
But if if let's say they they determine it's fifteen hundred square feet as an example. And. You think then wouldn't? All subdivision, that's the minimum. It doesn't say that's the maximum.
Right.
Uh. And so I just want to make sure that we don't get tripped up somehow with these two kind of conflicting standards. Uh between the subdivision, the middle housing standards.
I.
Tripped up is a would be an example, an example of being tripped up would be that you could conventionally subdivide. For a lot size according to these standards in ninety five five, but wind up with. A lot that could be middle housing land divided. Because the demand, the 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 math wasn't uh corresponding.
Yeah, I'm. Just a a little confusing, you know, but I guess a flag lot, if it was gonna be uh. That's the minimum fifteen hundred square feet. There's no maximum, could be twenty thousand square feet. And so uh this provision would apply to uh anything that uh. Wasn't defined as middle housing and therefore a twenty foot wide access easement as opposed to a ten foot wide. Would be the uh required.
I sort of made a note here that uh I think you raised the point of going ahead and. Clarifying that in this particular article. So that we're under a clear understanding that for the most part. Unless otherwise accepted, these are for the traditional partition and subdivision. And just clarify that.
And by clarifying that, you mean and not for middle housing?
Yeah, because I there's a bunch of standards in the middle housing, for instance, on driveway width and stuff like that. And so that. Those provisions would apply to someone who was creating a subdivision that had more compact house. I think that's the differentiate. Think.
Okay, um. I'm thinking of adding a section. Under toward the end that just discusses the relationship with Article eight. Or nine, whatever combination. And just kind of lays that out that um. It sounds like though, Marcy, you're right. I think we're gonna have to look at. Where you're going with ninety five dash four on. Minimum lot sizes too. Yeah, okay, noted.
Can I um? I almost hesitate to bring this up, but I think it's it's now or never really um. There is a privilege, we have been doing a lot of discussion around ninety five four having to do with the minimum lot size and townhouses. Um. There's a provision a city can elect to apply. And that is to exempt townhouses from flag lots. And I do think that's something that we might want to consider.
Because they would be attached. As townhouses and therefore the flag lot doesn't make any sense, is that why?
Well, I just think um with the the smaller lot size that comes with the maximum density provision of townhouses. And the um. The access requirements on a flag lot, it it just seems like it's adding in a little bit of um more unintended consequences that we may not know. Ahead of time. It doesn't seem like we get a whole lot for allowing townhouses on flag lots, and we might um actually get some things that we don't like.
It also seems to me that there is a reason that there is they allow for that provision.
Yeah.
What what might be helpful for us? Um as we get closer to the end of this project would be to do some kind of a chart similar to what you did for city council. That shows. This is the type of development. These are the standards that apply. And maybe um and and that way. A, when we when we take this to council, they won't maybe have to go through as many um gyrations as we as we put them through trying to understand. What we did with ninety five four. And it might be helpful to, you know, for the public and as just as a handout in general, once once we've adopted to make it kind of easier for. Um developers or owners to understand what they're looking at. It's just just a general comment.
That's a good idea, but on on top of that, don't you just need? Something in Article Two that exempts middle housing? So so people aren't wondering which of these applies.
And I think I think I noted that I'm looking at adding some that talk that discusses the relationship with these regulations. To middle housing. I think that's a very good point. On whether it does or does not apply, it also sounds like you're still working on the minimum lot size. And clarifying some of the. Townhouse issues as well, so um yeah, I think some clarity along the way would help.
And it might be as easy as a lots and parcels Article Two. Standards for partitions and subdivisions in conventional. And then a separate article on design standards for middle housing. As far as the block division. I don't know, maybe that's complicating things again by adding another chapter, but to weasel them apart.
Well, I I guess I'm questioning uh why have two sets of design standards that apply to the residential? And uh. There's certainly need for the commercial industrial public uses. But uh. Really, except for the flag lot thing. You didn't know why. We would have uh two sets of design standards. That's basic question.
Well, just note that one of the questions was, what is the application of Articles two and three? To middle housing and in my commentary, I noted that um. Both articles apply to all land divisions, including expedite land divisions. Uh middle housing divisions only need to apply to Article Three. So um. It's it's clear those standards are just completely different because of the type of housing. However, you raise the point, that's not stated within this particular article, and it would definitely be beneficial. To to sort of make that clear that these apply to the following. And then when you get to middle housing, you know that uh those. Article two does not apply.
Any any further discussion?
I've got a question, Walt, on utility easements, item F.
Mm hmm.
It states that uh. The lot shall include an easement within the easement width. Conforming to the applicable public and or private utility standards. That sounds pretty straightforward and yet um. I think if we left within the easement without. Then it would help. Make that a little bit more compact and still get the uh necessary word in.
An easement. I think you're right. I concur. I was thinking in terms of.
A general.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I really appreciate the depths to which. All of you have been looking at this material. And it's really, it makes a big difference to know that. Everybody's kind of tuned in, so. She's me coming to. Any any other comment about utilities? We had a question about the lot averaging, but I understand it now, so. I'm not gonna ask anymore. Well, any further? Questions, comments, anything that we need to flag for later discussion on Article Two?
Well, I'm sort of, to the extent I understand this, I'm I'm sort of. With Bert on this. I don't know why we're having. Design standards in in this ordinance, we've already got them in. Ninety five four. Especially for them to go forward and say that these don't apply to. Some of the things, middle houses in ninety five four. From from I don't I don't see why most of this is necessary.
Will these apply to commercial and? Um other uses as well?
Mm hmm.
I guess I guess part of the issue is, do you talk about flag lots in ninety five dash four? And you have a standard for them? Because if staff is going to be responsible for reviewing a partition. Along those lines, it needs to be clear and objective. Um um. The the planner can say, well, it's good enough for this one, but you need to have a little wider for this one. It has to be clear and objective for us to process it as a uh type two. And same thing with the issue of uh access. My reading of the old ninety five dash four. It talked about with widths and whatnot, but it never incorporated flag lots. Uh access requirements, et cetera. I guess I guess my comment is that there are certain base standards that need to be applied um across the board. Conversely, I think some of these might be able to be incorporated into ninety five dash four. I mean, it's served like. Where would you like a place? But these also apply, for example, when you have a subdivision or expedited uh project as well, so. I I think there's some logic to keep them in with the land division ordinance. Uh at this time, um. So anyway, that's my thought. That's my thought.
We talked about shared access. In. The past discussion, um would that specifically be middle housing?
No, there is a provision further on in Article Three that talks about private streets and private easements. So that's where you get into shared private access. And there is two different types, one for streets built to a certain standard. Uh that I think are incorporated or will be in the T S P. And the other one has to do with the shared access easement. That two or three homes can work off of. I think it's two or three.
Yeah, maybe we could discuss that when we get to that one, Walt. Uh. But uh but Mercy, didn't we have like a ten foot drive for middle housing or something?
Yes, it's it's.
As opposed to.
Maximum five, five feet from the side property line is now three feet. And a shared driveway is allowed to be. Fifteen, I think, or twelve.
Whatever the. The dimension is, so uh. But you could, couldn't you have a flag lot that had three small units on a parcel that was having a shared driveway? Or that wouldn't be a flag lot because it would just uh uh the flag lot definition is that it's uh an owned piece of property that goes all the way to the street. Got it.
You could have a flag lot that is further divided into. Some sort of middle housing combination, I would assume, unless maybe you're you're not going in that direction. That there would be the shared access.
But but a duplex, which is defined as two units that were separate on their own land. Uh. Would be defined as middle housing under the code. And therefore you could have a ten foot or twelve foot or whatever it is driveway. And still have a flag lot in that division.
Mercy.
Be. This would be. Middle housing. Taken to the next step in the flag lot, though. The flag lot could be a standard subdivision.
middle housing taken to the next step in the flag lot, though. The flag lot could be a standard subdivision.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I just want to make sure that, you know, that, that if we have, you know, two units that are two units.
Two units, right.
They're allowed to have a smaller driveway, to have more yard and trees and stuff like that.
I think that's just an issue of coordinating the middle housing driveway with, with, uh, driveway and easements that a flag lot is required to have.
Yeah, that's coordinating subdivision with, uh, middle housing piece.
Yes.
I think I get it. It's still that trigger of the minimum density requirement that the lot is like that.
If I'm not a builder or developer, it, it seems confusing to me if I wanted to divide a lot. And I, and I pull out Article Two and I look at these, here's the requirements for doing it, the access and all this stuff. And then some point down the road say, oh, by the way, it's gonna be a duplex, so, so I don't have to do this after all. What, what's telling me that I get out of this? When it's middle housing? How would I know that?
Uh, that you're developing middle housing type, housing type.
But what, what tells me that if I'm developing a middle housing type, that this doesn't apply? What on its face says that?
If, if you're developing middle housing, then you're eligible for the middle housing expedited land division. But if you're not developing middle housing, you, you only get this, you get the expedited conventional subdivision process.
Yeah, but this is separate from expedited. Maybe I don't want to do expedited. I'll go through the regular process, but what tells me that it's middle housing, so this doesn't apply?
You still have to put up a, or submit building plans on what the building is gonna look like, and there's a whole list of requirements. Um, in the pack that Marcy shared as part of this meeting, there was just various ways to do it. So you still have to come up with a building plan, and that building plan has to conform to state, state code.
I think that's something that we haven't made clear, which is that the middle housing building permit and land division happen at the same time. But that, that's not necessarily true for a conventional subdivision.
Correct.
So, so if I, I, I'm asking, I think I'm, understand what Tom's getting at. So if I have a lot and I want to sell off the back half of it with a flag driveway with no other plans for what to do with it, then it falls under Article Two. If I, if I sell that and then whoever buys it from me wants to divide it into a duplex or a triplex, then they have to meet the middle housing standards, which could be different from what I sold. Actually, it'd probably be less, less than what I sold, right? Because if I needed to give them a twenty-foot access and all they need is a ten, then they have an extra ten feet of driveway to do something with.
And that's our goal. We want them to plant it and make it pretty and.
Right. Okay, does that, does that get it? You're, it's, it's when it, when the division happens, I guess, is when you decide what?
Actually, Karen, you have a very good example of why you use a flag lot. A narrow but deep lot, there's no efficient way of having under a conventional partition, two homes side by side. And so it makes more sense to have one home in the front and one home in the back. So it's common to use the flag lot, uh, option to efficiently develop the site. But you're right, at some point in the future, someone may want to do something different with a vacant parcel, and they can go through the appropriate process for that.
Though I would divide it under one process.
Mm-hmm.
Tom is my buyer, would divide it under a separate process if he wants to build more housing.
Or just develop it. You don't have to divide it any further.
Right.
You can put a duplex on it without dividing it.
Right, right, okay.
Exactly, right. I think there's three possibilities you, you have that you've subdivided conventional subdivision to create the flag lot. And then someone comes in, builds a duplex on that back lot. Uh, or someone, third option is someone comes in and develops a duplex on the back lot and then applies for a middle housing land division at the same time.
Yeah. Exactly.
It's becoming clearer. Anything else on Article Two? Do the quick rundown. Where do you stand on Article Two?
Uh, all of you seem to get it and, and are comfortable with it, so I am too.
Yeah, trust us.
I'll, I'll study it some more.
Okay.
Maybe it'll make sense.
Is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
I'm fine with the changes that were recommended.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, given the whole code is trying to encourage middle housing.
Yeah.
So I think that's, uh, it's, I'm good with it.
Okay, Brad?
Okay with it.
Okay, I'm okay with it too. Right, on to street standards.
Okay, Karen, may I request, say, about a five-minute break here?
You know, I was just checking my clock to see where we stand. Sure, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you so much.
Uh, five thirty-four.
Hey. What a fan.
Hey, Leila, can I ask you a question while we're on this break?
Okay.
I'll text you.
Okay. Great, we're good to go. Um, Tom, do you want to phrase your question to, um, Marcy and Walt about the other changes in our ninety-five-four with respect to cottage clusters and?
Oh.
Let's get an answer to that, because that's pressing.
This is more ninety-five-four, but I, I was reading through House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight, which just took effect in July one. The latest law from the legislature. And it made some changes that would impact that we've already done with ninety-five-four. For example, we, um, we approved what we called courtyard apartments, which are uh, cottage clusters that are attached. And we did that because the former law said a cottage cluster had to be detached. Well, the legislation with this new law changed the definition of cottage cluster to say it's either attached or detached, which means our courtyard apartments is kind of meaningless. It's subsumed within the definition of cottage cluster. So I, I don't know whether what we sent off to the city council is, is fixing that or making any other changes that, that the new law may require?
We're in compliance with twenty-one thirty-eight in advance of it going to effect, is basically, if, if we, if. We're in compliance with twenty-one thirty-eight in advance of it going to effect, is basically, if, if we, if.
It's weird to define cottage cluster differently in our ordinance than it is defined now in the law. Include a definition of courtyard apartment that isn't in the law, but is subsumed within cottage clusters. That's what I'm wondering. We could just eliminate courtyard apartments.
You could, yes, you could, but, um, it was, seemed premature to do that. The way the definition for courtyard apartments um, is defined as cottage, subject to all the same rules as cottage clusters are simply attached. I mean, it's something like that. And in a, in a, in a more elegant pro- code proposal, in the future, that was consistent with twenty-one thirty-eight, we would probably not have two separate definitions, but we're playing with a moving target a little bit. And it's also possible that the council will say that for now, they don't want to permit these extra non-required housing types they have next year to do that, to be that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about cleaning up the thing to make, and, and maybe we can't do that now since we've already approved it and sent it on to them.
Yes, I would just add on to what Marcy's saying, is the council's still just deliberating whether or not they want to do any of the extras. And if they decide to perhaps, well, there, um, that's something Marcy, you can talk through. If they do intend or decide to approve cottage clusters, maybe there's a way we can clean it up in the language. Sorry, the courtyard apartments wasn't consolidated, but at this point, we're leaving it separate because they, we have a year to comply with twenty-one thirty-eight. It's January twenty.
Cottage clusters is mandatory.
Correct. Her definition of duplex is also compliant with twenty-one thirty-eight. Hey, so I want to do a time check. It's almost five forty-five. Marcy is heading out shortly. I think we, well, still. Um, can we stay about an extra half an hour, or is that just gonna be too, too, do you want to, you know, get a start on this streets and, and then?
Well, I think we can get through, um, three.
Should get through Article Three and then, um, we'll have to work. I think we'll need to, that other session that we've talked about on August twenty-fifth.
Yeah, and we're aiming for a public hearing on the night.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that'll be a public hearing to go through the rest of this?
Well, the, um, would we delay this? We made a date certain of September.
Ninth, your regular session meeting on the night, so.
We're talking about August twenty-fifth.
Yeah, we added that knowing we would probably need additional time to talk through these amendments, so, so workshop twenty-fifth. Public hearing on the ninth.
And you can always make changes after that. But. Is it Monday, the eighth?
Because of the eight, it's, okay.
Right.
Maybe that was the day that got wrong.
With twenty-one thirty-eight.
Cottage clusters is mandatory.
Correct. Their definition of duplexes also compliant with twenty-one thirty-eight. So I wanna do a time check, it's almost five forty-five. Marcy is heading out shortly. I think we, well, still. Can we stay about an extra half an hour, or is that just gonna be too, do you wanna? You know, get a start on the streets and then.
Well, I think we can get through three.
Should get through Article three and then. We'll have to work, I think we'll need to that other session that we've talked about on August twenty-fifth.
Yeah, and we're aiming for a public hearing on the ninth.
Okay, so that'll be a public hearing to go through the rest of this?
Well, the, would we delay this? We made a date certain of September.
Ninth, your regular session meeting on the ninth, so. Yeah, we added that knowing we would probably need additional time to talk through these amendments, so workshop twenty-fifth. Public hearing on the ninth.
And you can always make changes after that.
Is it Monday, the eighth?
Cuz of the eight, it's okay, maybe that was the day that got wrong.
Well, we said August day.
I should be looking at my.
Right, it was our next.
That's when you hold a public hearing, because we set the measure fifty-six notices out and we delayed that.
Work session on the twenty-fifth gave us extra time, August twenty-fifth.
Yes, twenty-fifth, so to carry us to the September eighth hearing. So it's up to you, you just might have a longer work session on the twenty-fifth if you can.
Street standards.
Okay, one thing, I don't, I'm not too sure what you're planning on September eighth. But I will be totally unavailable. I mean, totally seeing a concert up in Portland that we have tickets for, so.
What's up, awesome, I'm Marcy, we'll miss you.
Okay, thanks, okay, I just make sure there's no confusion. Okay, street standards, ta-da, ta-da. This is, there's a number of things on street standards in the current code. This one article just focuses on those items. The material identifies right minimum right-of-way with. Improvement requirements, many current provisions. That mostly apply to subdivisions like alignment, street extensions, intersection angles. And so forth, marginal access streets. The article does introduce new guidelines for private streets and allowing for the creation of private access easement. Finally, language identifies the improvement requirements for new streets. I think most of what's in the current ordinance is here. But I think the changes have to do with clear and objective standards for private streets. Private access easements, which is kinda new, and. Also updating the street requirements spelled out. Now, I wanna be sure that what's in the. Under item A three. Three, three, zero, one, zero, A three is the current T S P, so definitely wanna look into that. But that was the last item that I received last January. And other than that, it basically consolidates the information that you currently have. And just adds a couple of more items to it. And that is Article three, and look forward to any questions you may have.
The items that you've added are the ones that are highlighted, local with sharrows and local with bike advisory lane, is that correct?
Well, I don't think I, yeah, where it says significant changes just covers the difference. But under street standards on my memorandum, I just outlined the new section. I don't think I did any. I mean, part of what I do is like, if it's a new section, I always bold and underline it anyway. Just, yeah, it's more of a formatting thing.
Primary question, Walt, is that this is really targeted at the subdivisions, if I'm not mistaken, and that if I was doing a. Middle housing project, I wouldn't be subject to, for instance, the private access easement requirements and kinda what we just talked about.
Actually, everything in the code. Both under Article eight partitions. Property boundary adjustment subdivision are subject to Article three. And that's noted in Article eight as well. So if you're gonna be, for example, dividing land. And you have to dedicate additional right-of-way, so you would dedicate the additional right-of-way. So those standards hold regardless. Now, again, there's, once you get off the public right-of-way, you're looking at a separate set of issues. And that's private access easement, et cetera. But for the most part, private access easement and private street likely be for. The access easement more likely partitions, and the private street will be for a, maybe portions of a subdivision. The other thing too is that you have. A planned unit development provision in ninety-five dash four. And there, and if I recall, I think private streets are, you know, welcome. At least you have a standard here to work with. And again, we may need to cross-reference that with ninety-five dash four.
Okay, let me just, for instance, in private access easement under B. No more than two lots or parcels shall have their sole access to the easement. Easement serving more than two lots or parcels should comply with vision for a private street in A above. So if I have a three-unit development. That's middle housing. What do I comply with?
Well, I don't know if you'd be creating a street.
I, but I would have a, I would be. Having an easement.
Right.
Serving three units. It could be a driveway rather than a private street.
It's a separate driveway tract.
Yeah.
It depends on the design.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there is that separation, again, I think most of these really refer to the public right-of-way. With the exception of an access easement and a private street as part of a subdivision. However, you do raise a very good point, either here or in Article eight or both. Make some clarification on the access easement. May or may not apply to Article eight, look into that a little bit more, but I think that's a very good point.
Yeah, I think it kind of the widths and everything kinda has to just need to go through this Article three to make sure that. We're not tripping up the goals of the middle housing ordinance.
Concur, concur, and so, again, I think staff can make the interpretation, but you don't want that. If you want clear and objective standards.
It's important, one additional one is lots and parcels served by private streets or easements, once again. And, you know, there could be a three home development with a private easement to access garages, let's just say. And here, the easement containing the private street or access easement shall be excluded from the lot or parcel size calculation.
Correct.
That would be pretty unusual, that you would not have that included within the lot area.
Actually, the case would be no, you wanna exclude it because it's undevelopable property. In other words, you can't put a house on an access easement. So you cannot include that in the square footage calculation. Similar to a flag, the flag pole.
But it could be owned by, let's just say you split a rectangular lot into three lots, and there's an easement on two of those lots. It could be owned still by individuals on those three lots, and two of them would have an easement. Over their lots to access the third lot. And that doesn't seem reasonable to exclude the area. You're just creating smaller and smaller housing.
And what you're doing is just creating a substandard lot by doing it that way. Under item B six, it talks about there has to be a provision for shared maintenance on the access easement. And so by doing it that way, that is in effect. A private street or private road, or due to the limited number of homes, it's an access easement. And so you traditionally do not include that access. As part of the buildable area. For example, you could have a utility easement. That is part of your front yard or backyard or whatever, it's still usable property. But when you have a paved area that vehicles are coming and going, that's not really part of a usable lot.
Yeah, I would disagree, I think the standard protocol these days would be to. Especially when you're trying to create middle housing, would be to. You know, include that within the area of the first two outlots. As opposed to have one larger lot and two smaller lots. And maybe it's, if it's a. Public, you know, I think it's a little different if it's an easement accessing a few houses versus a street or something. So is it public easement or private easement? Is that differentiated? Anyway, that's just an opinion of my, I have.
It sounds like we're getting back into that. Middle housing versus subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, so we just don't get tripped up once again.
Walt's talking about how you would do it typically in a subdivision situation. Or a normal partition situation. You're thinking about it more in terms of.
Private streets or easements.
Well, true.
So, you know, I think. I mean, it's a discussion, you know, obviously, but in my experience, that has not been excluded from. The lot area.
Didn't we exclude it in ninety-five?
I thought we did.
Thought we did too.
We specifically did.
Excluded easements.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and look, I don't have it in front of me, but.
I wouldn't rely on my memory.
The factually makes for less housing. Because you have to deduct that square footage. And smaller homes.
You mean smaller houses.
Because you're F A R, but would the percentage be that much? I mean.
Well, could be.
And that it seems like just a procedural thing, you know, in terms of, it's more of a policy decision. Do you include that within the lot area so the F A R in that house can be larger? Or do you exclude it for some reason and make the houses smaller? It's really a policy decision. And, you know, I think. Then taxation too, though, because who accounts for that square footage and who's? They get taxed on it, but they just can't use it. Okay, so. Is it, cuz it's. So they get credit for it from tax, from a tax purpose, but then that's it, but no credit towards what they could build. In that lot, yeah, they have to pay taxes on that lot, and there's some kind of shared agreement or something among the people. So I don't, that's just a. You know, maybe it makes sense for a subdivision, but I think if we're trying to promote middle housing. You know, and we're restricting the F A R. You're just making that lot smaller and smaller and smaller, but, you know, the unit gets smaller and smaller and smaller.
So could I suggest that we flag this as something for further discussion?
Okay.
When we're all more alert.
Fed and watered properly.
Do you articulate though the key points so you can make sure we circle back exactly to what you're saying?
Well, I think. You know, if you're looking at a giant subdivision with private streets, you know. It makes sense to not have those streets in, you know, the lot area, not include streets, right? That's pretty standard practice. But if you're talking about trying to create three units on a parcel. And then you're gobbling out all the access for the driveways and stuff, that doesn't seem reasonable. And if we're trying to create middle housing. I think that should be a benefit of the middle housing ordinance, is that that is, you know. Those easements are included in a lot area so that the unit could be larger.
The driveway in a typical single-family home. Is part of the overall F A R, basically what, he's saying just apply that to three, three units.
Yeah, I'm thinking with, let me circle back and see if that's already been discussed.
Not like you're gonna go from building a shack to a mansion, but they're gonna have a little bit.
Yeah, I'll check in with Marcy about that, cuz that may be already addressed in ninety-five-four.
We may have come down.
I'll double side opposite.
I can't remember which side you came down, but we have a pretty significant discussion now that.
Okay, anything else on this vertical?
T S P, I just wanted. Yeah, I definitely wanna make sure the numbers are up to date. And correct.
Yeah, one additional item, all private access easement shall be designated fire lanes and signed for no parking. You know, a fire lane would then typically have a minimum width required. And if you're building three tiny homes on a lot, let's say. Why would we penalize those folks compared to a single-family residence that wouldn't have that requirement? As long as all the. Requirements of the fire department were met, meaning hose length distance and all that stuff. It doesn't make sense to me that a private easement for a very small development would have to be designated fire. Very typically. From the fire department access. A hundred and fifty-foot hose length around the structure. Would be fine, which is what a single-family house happens. If it's beyond that fire access point, then a fire lane would be required. But I think it penalizes middle housing to get.
Well, the issue here is really a public safety issue. The easement width has to be twenty feet, which is the minimum required. I think you will find with the fire district, and at least fourteen feet has to be paved, I've included sixteen, assuming there probably be. Two times when you have a car coming in and a car coming out. The issue is though you're not looking at fire trucks only, but also ambulances. And you wanna avoid people parking on that area, I mean, it's, you're right, if you can get.
I agree with you for a larger development, for a five thousand square foot lot. And I have a duplex or triplex or three separate structures, it doesn't make any sense to have that, you don't have that for a single-family house.
Okay, but if you're looking.
There won't be any, there shouldn't be a requirement for the, by the fire department, create fire lanes into these lots. If it's, yeah, if it's a small lot.
But depends on the use. Your point about two structures. That can be serviced with a driveway, it doesn't need to be a private.
That's right, does it, well, if it's owned, it might be easement. But it, yeah, you could have three units.
But it'd still be a driveway.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be an access.
That's what I, I just wanna make sure the language is allowing that and doesn't trigger automatically a fire lane for a three-unit development.
You're looking at.
Can't imagine.
Because it's not a private street, it's.
No, no, I think that's where some of the confusion is coming from.
Private access easement could just be a shared driveway, right?
Yes, correct.
Lots and parcels served by private streets or easements.
That's a different section.
Yeah, C.
That's the next section down.
Private streets and easements, C. You know, I hate to be a stickler on this, but, you know.
We wanna get it right.
Yeah, lots and parcels served by private streets or easements. Okay, I've got a five thousand square foot lot, I wanna do three units on that. And, you know, the units back in the back are gonna have to have a driveway. And there, you know, be an easement potentially, so there could be three separate owned parcels. With the access easement for the back two. It shouldn't have to be a fire, as long as, you know, I mean, the five thousand square foot lot in Mancuneta is fifty by a hundred. You can get a fire hose, you know, around any structure, any part of it, you know, yeah, any part of it.
It just sounds like you wanna clarify the difference between a street and essentially a driveway.
That's what it is, and easements, you know.
Driveway easement maybe was different than an access.
This is reasonable if, you know, it's a subdivision with private streets that have. Easements on it or something like that, but not for middle. easements on it or something like that, but not for middle housing that's, you know, a few units. Uh, if, if it, if it doesn't meet the hose length requirement, then yes, fire lane would be required. Uh, and if it was over a hundred and fifty feet, then you'd have to have a turnaround.
May I make a suggestion that what I'm working at with this one is based on my experience working with fire districts throughout the state and fire district regulations. May I suggest that, um, we get ahold of the fire district and ask them to look at this for their commentary. In other words, I really don't want to hang up on this one issue. My concern always is public safety. And if people are parking on an easement where an ambulance or fire engine cannot get through, that potentially creates a disaster. But let me follow up with the fire district, see what they have to say. And the next time Marcy brings it forward, we could share that information. Does that sound fair?
I think that's good, but let's keep in mind, uh, you know, currently, uh, duplexes in the city don't have to have a fire lane on their property. And so, uh, a single family house doesn't have to have a fire lane on the property. And, uh, I, I don't think a three unit or four unit project.
We have three and four unit buildings.
Yeah.
In town that don't have fire lines.
We, we would be making it more restrictive than the fire code, I believe.
Well, I think it might be as simple as just differentiating between a driveway easement and a street or access easement, which would have the, I would have the same concerns you do about that. But for a lot that's serving multiple buildings as a driveway, no one should be parking in that driveway to block the other people.
Yeah, that would have that always be.
Friend.
Yeah, that would be clear.
Treatment of that type of quote unquote easement. Right? Because it only applies if it's an ownership situation, because then you would have a shared easement for your access to your property, but it's really a driveway. It's not.
We, we have talked about shared driveways. You can't park on a shared driveway.
Right.
Those.
Maybe that's what it is. What, eh? Not an easement.
That's what it is.
Yeah, so maybe just clarify that in the language.
And I guess.
We could call us that.
If they, if that's the only access to a street, like there's no street frontage otherwise, then yeah, you shouldn't be able to park in there.
Right.
No one's gonna.
But if, yeah.
Yeah, they're not parking spaces.
Because you block the, well, you.
You block everybody else.
Right.
Yeah.
The owner, nobody, the, the person in the back isn't going to park in front and the person in front isn't going to park there either because the two in the back are. Like, it's so bad.
I don't see that.
I think a private access easement.
Access for ambulance.
Oh, here. Cold, too.
Wouldn't, wouldn't worry about it, even if they have a street. They, they just need to drive into their driveway.
Yeah. I think it's a simple solution. We'll talk through it.
Right, we'll figure that out. Anything on three point oh three oh or, or further?
I got. And everything else looks good. It's nice to have some standards.
Okay.
You're fine? It's fine?
Yes. I'm good.
Really? I just want to make sure that we filter this to make sure we're promoting this.
Yeah, that's what they, they're going to.
Yes, right. As we go through that, then I'm good.
Yeah.
I'm all for super safe housing and fire departments.
Yeah, Brad, you haven't jumped in yet. Do you have any comments on this?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, I'm good too. With the adjustments we've talked about for clarifications.
Yes, I think, yeah.
Okay, so should we do four through eight next time?
Start with, with four. It's gonna be four through nine.
It's from.
Four to nine. Page it in that. That's only a page in it. And then you're like, technically halfway there.
I wouldn't mind doing Article four. I mean, it's real simple, pretty straightforward.
I know that we got stomachs rumbling over here, so.
Oh.
I didn't have any comments on it. Did anybody else?
Yes. Did you come up? It's a. I gotta find my note here now, um. What's the scenario that contributes to the need for a property boundary adjustment?
Um, you're not creating a new lot or parcel. Uh, a simple example would be, um, we did a survey and found out the tree that I thought forever was on my property and find, found out it was on your property. So we want to move everything over. Or for example, there is a structure that doesn't, uh, meet a setback. And so you can go ahead and, um, change the property boundary to go ahead and ensure conformance. Also bear in mind, property boundary adjustments allow you to consolidate property. You can eliminate the boundary between two pieces of property. So it's, it's, uh, it's a pretty flexible thing. Um, you still have to do a little map work and plat work, uh, uh, especially for things like a platted subdivision. But it allows a way to take care of some of the characteristics on maybe two adjoining properties that the boundary adjustment makes sense.
Thank you all.
And with regard to Article four, uh, this is pretty much straightforward. Right out of, uh, I think, I think your standard property boundary, uh, adjustment assessment. The re- review criteria are pretty straightforward. And then depending on what the county, uh, surveyor wants, they all do it a little differently. Some of them don't require a plat, others just require, uh, a deed. I'm just going to leave that up to the county surveyor. Although I think you should require a plat, but that's neither here nor there. But this is pretty straightforward. And the main reason for putting this in, the last two I had to work in, uh, here in the city, I had to use O R S chapter ninety two and that gets a little cumbersome, so, um, that's basically it.
This is a type one application.
This will be a type one application. The applicants uh, submit, uh, staff puts the report together and only people who receive notice are the applicants and they retain the right of appeal.
So it seems pretty, pretty straightforward.
Um, I found something.
What'd you find?
Well, I, I'm looking at, um, C two C, a written state, part of your civil requiring, a written statement explaining the per, the purpose for the property boundary adjustment and demonstrating that it conforms to city land use regulations such as lot size and setbacks for existing buildings. But then you go down to review criteria and it says in D three, the adjustment shall not result in a setback violation for existing structures. Those, are, are those inconsistent?
No.
Certifying that it's not going to be a setback violation and then saying, don't worry about it. It's not going to be a setback violation.
Well, actually what they're going to show is through the. Actually, what they're doing is they're showing through the application process. They submit a map. Here's where my shed is. Here's where the property line is. I'm moving it over five feet. And so even though it violates the setbacks right now, moving the boundary, it will conform. And after the boundary adjustment, both, both parcels or both lots will meet or exceed the minimum lot area and dimension requirements of the underlying zone. That's, that's essentially what we're looking at.
Hmm.
Also, this is a good way of increasing the area for a non-conforming lot. In other words, if your lot does not conform, you have a forty five hundred square foot lot and you want to add a few hundred more square feet to it, but don't meet the minimum five thousand square foot lot size, you can go through the lot line adjustment. Um, in other words, that lot is not penalized because you're not increasing the non-conformity. You're actually increasing its conformity. So this can apply to a lot of different situations to, um, um, help with the boundary, um, allotments, if you will, between neighbors.
Anything else that makes sense to you?
Sort of. I got nothing further.
Still good?
Big.
Good, good.
Good.
Brad, good?
Good.
What do we call it? All good? Good on one through four with some additional thinking?
It's halftime.
Yeah.
Will there be a show at halftime?
I haven't talked to Beyonce, but.
Uh, well, it being six fourteen, I'll adjourn the meeting. And we'll see you all on the.
Just to be clear, we are re- adjourn, we are reconvening on August twenty fifth, at four o'clock.
Right.
Correct.
Feed before you come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring snacks back.
Snacks.
I'll bring, I'm gonna say. Bring snacks.
Now you know.
I'm gonna bid whack here next time.
For the record, Leila, do you put food in this?
You don't allow food in there?
I would choose that.
Right.
Well, I'm gonna exert a generous privilege and say, let's.
Oh, God. I'm just thinking of people eating at the diets.
Wouldn't it be awful?
No.
Sure.
Do a break and go in the conference.
Yep, you can go raid the staff refrigerator.
Yeah.
There's nothing in there.
So cheese boxes.
Thank you, everybody, for your considerable attention.
Yeah.
Would it off?
Yes.